for December 5th, 2017. Invite you to stand if you'd like while Commissioner Nash leads our invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you would, please bow your heads with me if you so choose and pray to the God of your choice. As we gather tonight to make decisions for our community, maybe use our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us and act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens. Amen. If you would, please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Perigin?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning?
Yes.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here. Do we have any awards or recognitions tonight, Mr. Febo?
I do not, Mayor.
Any on the commission, anything they need to bring to our attention?
But I would say the park opening was an award for the community.
Wasn't that a great event? I enjoyed those a lot. Good program and a good opportunity to remind everybody that the city is furnishing free carriage rides every Friday night to Christmas. You have any comments for us this evening?
I do not.
Approval of the minutes for our regular meeting on November 21st, 2017.
So moved.
Motion by Williams, second by Nash. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-52.
Ordinance closing a public right-of-way. Ordinance approving the closing of an unnamed alley located off Park Street adjacent to 946 Park Street.
Oh, moved.
Motion by Perigin, second by Nash. Second reading of a unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning. Is there any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of BG, ordinance BG 2017-53.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 0.72 acre from GB General Business to CB Central Business located at 850 and a portion of 866 Broadway Avenue presently owned by Cobblestone Capital LLC.
Moved.
Second.
By Nash, second by Perigin. Again, another unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning. Any further comments or questions on the second reading? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-54.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 60.71 acres from RM3 multi-family residential and F floodplain to RS1D single-family residential and F floodplain located on McFadden Station Street presently owned by Rivers Landing Edge LLC.
Moved.
By Perigin, second by Nash. Again, this unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning on a second reading. Any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-55.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing 0.2516 acre from RM3 multi-family residential to RM4 multi-family residential located at 1438 Kenton Street presently owned by Lan and Hong Nuneun.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Nash, second by Williams. Another unanimous vote by planning and zoning, or recommendation from planning and zoning. Is there any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance BG 2017-56.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.74 acre from AG Agriculture to HB Highway Business located at 397 Three Springs Road presently owned by Love Reve of Kentucky LLC.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams. Another unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning. Any further comments or questions on second reading? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. And second reading of ordinance BG 2017-57.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 1.16 acres from AG Agriculture to LI Light Industrial located at 2361 Louisville Road presently owned by Performance Feeds LLC.
Moved.
Second.
Nash, second by Perigin. And another unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning on second reading. Any further comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-244.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of R. Brandon Piercy to the position of carpenter in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Moved.
Motion by Nash, second by Perigin, Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. The incumbent to this position received a promotion within the city, thus creating this vacancy. We advertised, we had 22 applicants. Mr. Piercy has seven years' experience with WQU and the maintenance function as well as Stuart Ritchie. He was judged to be the best candidate from his peer group. Brent is here, Michael's here, if you have any questions.
I'll answer your questions. Please call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-245.
Municipal order approving the transfer of Mary F. Hudson to the position of animal control officer in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department.
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Perigin, second by Williams, Mr. Febo.
Thank you, Mayor. The incumbent in this position chose to pursue a career in self-employment, opening up this vacancy. We advertised, we had 117 applicants. Forty-five were vetted by the Personnel Department and sent to the hiring agency, in this case, NCS. From that, six persons were interviewed and a tender was considered for Mary Hudson. Mary Hudson is a current employee. She had once served as animal control officer, then moved away, I believe, with her family or her husband, and came back and served us for seven years as a police officer. Now has made a decision to go, to want to go back to animal control. Michael and Brent Childers are here, if you have any questions.
I'll answer your questions. Call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2017-246.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting, been number 201836, for the Sloan Convention Center industrial dishwasher from Hotel and Restaurant Supply Incorporated of Nashville, Tennessee in the amount of $118,599.
Moved.
Second.
Nash, second. Mr. Febo.
I think we can all feel the pain when we have to get a new dishwasher in this case. This is especially poignant. The winning bid for acquiring a new dishwasher for the convention center is Hotel Supply, Inc., of Nashville. We had five bidder and the low bidder was $118,599. This is for an industrial-class dishwasher, which handles thousands of dishes possibly in one night, and also involves the installation. Michael hasn't had a chance to meet with the convention center board, which is made up of the City Commission and members of the county, but he's here if you have any questions. So this is a two-part process. Sometimes the board meets and you second their motion. Here, you're first. Mike, you want Mike to give an overview?
If he has any questions for me. All right, then. Call the roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. We have a work session for the Bowling Green Fire Department Protection Analysis.
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask Jason Colson, Fire Chief, to come up and to talk to the commission and to the public who may watch about our need to meet the growth pressures of this community. In this case, we're going to be talking about the growth pressures facing a number of corridors in our community and Jason and his cohort at the fire department, their attempt to address that need. Jason?
Mr. Febo, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to be here this evening to discuss fire protection in the city with you. Before we get started, I just want to share that I am extremely proud of our department and the commitment of our members to provide the best possible service to our citizens. As part of our commitment to evaluate and improve the services that we offer, the department has been analyzing various areas of the city, and we're here today to discuss a couple of those and share those results with you. Some things that we've evaluated or taken a close look at are the actual travel time to reach various locations, utilizing data from the last two years of responses. We've evaluated demand for services in various areas. Another consideration is future growth and development that's occurring throughout the city and specifically in areas that we'll discuss. Traffic features, obviously slowdown responses, as well as we've looked at acceptable elapsed time for our resources to arrive. In other words, are we arriving in a timely fashion to jurisdictions? And then the last thing that we've evaluated or considered is to ensure that our personnel, we have enough personnel on scene to perform critical functions. It takes more than just one fire truck to extinguish a working structure fire. As a matter of fact, it takes several, and we've determined that it takes at least 14 personnel to perform critical functions on the scene of a, on the scene of a working structure fire. So, you know, it's not about getting one truck, it's about getting multiple trucks there in a timely fashion. So those are just some of the things that we've can, that we've taken into consideration as part of this proposal. Additionally, there are a couple of methodologies that we utilize when determining where to position our resources. Briefly summarize a couple of those. The first being the ISO or Insurance Services Organization. This organization grades all fire departments in the country on a scale of essentially 1 to 10, with a Class 1 representing what they consider exemplary public fire protection. The scale is graded 90 to 100 is a 1, 80 to 89, Class 2, so on and so forth. Why is this important? Their grading affects the pricing for a variety of commercial and personal insurance. The price of property insurance in a community with a good grade is typically lower than that in a community with a poor grade. The Bowling Green Fire Department was last rated in 2015. We are proud that we were able to improve our rating in that evaluation. In 2015, we were graded as an 80.8, so we squeaked into the Class 2 category. Two things we're talking about tonight, and this is really important, and I hope that you understand, tonight we're going to talk about station locations and staffing, okay? Those things, those two things account for 25% of our grade. During the 2015 analysis, it's important that you understand that we scored a 59% on those two things, with 100% being perfect. So that's kind of where we're at when it comes to station locations and staffing, and we'll dive into that a little bit more. The other methodology that we've utilized is that from the National Fire Protection Association. They put out numerous standards that help departments identify benchmarks. Their benchmark for, is basically four-minute travel time for the first arriving unit, okay? Let me back up. The ISO, their benchmark for engine companies is that they have an engine company, you have an engine company within a mile and a half of all, basically, areas that are developed. So that's the other benchmark, and I failed to mention that earlier, sorry. So we're talking about a mile and a half and/or four minutes, and really when you figure that we travel 30 to 35 miles an hour, it all equates to about a four-minute travel time. So that's what we're going to talk about through the rest of this presentation, is travel time. Why is four minutes relevant? As time elapses in the event of emergency, the chances of survival decrease, and there are numerous studies from various organizations that have determined that as time elapses, the chances of survival is deteriorating and the fire damage obviously increases. Again, that closely relates to biological death, and brain damage occurs in that four to six-minute window. So that's really why four minutes matters. And for the purposes of our conversation today, it's relevant that you understand that we're just, the time I'm going to share with you is travel time. You have to understand that there is more time that elapses from the time an emergency's discovered or from the time that somebody calls 911. The call must be processed, it must be entered into the system, our units must be dispatched, and they must get to the truck, don the proper equipment, and then begin responding. So essentially, there are about two and a half additional minutes that occur that we're not going to talk about for the purposes of this conversation, talking time and distance. What you see here is just a map of our existing stations. We have six stations located throughout the city. They're pictured by the red bell. The areas that we're going to talk about today are lightly colored in the Lover's Lane area and also the north side of town. I'll begin with the Lover's Lane area. This area encompasses Indian Hills, Briarwoods, Traditions, Fruit of the Loom, and the Middle Bridge area. Currently, this particular area is protected by three of our stations: headquarters, the airport station, and also Greenwood. This next slide shows you the travel time of those particular stations to that identified area. The headquarters station responding to the Indian Hills and Briarwood area, with four minutes being our objective, 90 times out of 100, they arrive in 6 minutes and 17 seconds or less. So a couple minutes in excess of the benchmark. The airport station, which covers the Traditions area, their first unit travel time is 6 minutes and 31 seconds. Again, these numbers are based off 2016 responses. And then the Greenwood station, which covers the Middle Bridge, Ken, Middle Bridge, Shavelane area, their first unit travel time is 5 minutes and 40 seconds. What you see here is just putting the numbers from the previous slide into a table. Essentially, there were 239 responses in 2016 to that area. 70% of the time, our units responding to that area are exceeding the four-minute travel time. 30% of the time, we are successful in reaching that location under four minutes. And then 6 minutes 18 seconds is the cumulative 90th percentile for all districts in that particular area. We've got just a couple examples to demonstrate real-life scenarios in that particular area. This was a structure fire earlier this year on Ridge Wood Court, which is back in Indian Hills. The fire occurred, as you see, at 5:20 a.m. Not a lot of traffic, which is really perfect conditions for our travel time. And what you see there is the lapse time from that particular incident. We had units en route in about 2 minutes and 35 seconds after we received the call from the caller. Our first units arrived 9 minutes and 34 seconds after that call was received, and you see the travel time out to the side there, 6 minutes and 59 seconds. And I mentioned, other units have to get there to support those initial arriving units. In this case, the station from Greenwood was the next arriving, and there was 11 minutes and 42 seconds that had elapsed by the time of their arrival. We talked about development being a consideration. These are things that we know are going on in the Lover's Lane area. There are currently about 400 acres of undeveloped property. According to Brent Childers, we expect 400 to 500 million dollars invested in that area over the next five years. Several of the planned developments include 600-plus multifamily housing units, hotel, restaurants, banking facilities, multiple medical facilities, and residential homes as well. I'd like to transition into the north side area. Later in the presentation, we'll talk about solutions or recommendations. Moving to the north side area, this area begins about two miles north of our existing Porter Pike station, and it'll extend up Glasgow Road in excess of five miles from that particular station. Using the same data of 2016 as our dataset, our first unit travel time to that particular area is 11 minutes and 7 seconds, again with four minutes being the performance objective. And this just shows you again a table format of that previous slide. You might take notice of the increase from 2015 to 2016. The responses to that particular area have nearly doubled. As that area has, is developed and employing more people, businesses are moving to that area. Again, focusing on 2016, 96.8% of the time, our travel time exceeded the four minutes, and we were successful in getting there under four minutes, only 3.2%, with again 11 minutes and 7 seconds being the 90th percentile for our travel time to the north side area. Again, painting the real world, we had a structure fire in the Transpark area back in September. Again, perfect conditions as far as no traffic, 12:37 in the morning. You can see our units were out the door in a minute and 50 seconds, and with a 7-minute and 2-second travel time, they arrived 8 minutes and 52 seconds after the call was received. Headquarters units are the next arriving units to support that particular station, and it took them 12 minutes and 52 seconds travel time to get there. And then Greenwood, of course, would be the third arriving station with 14 minutes travel time to provide the needed manpower in the event of, you know, a significant fire. And then just another example that I pulled from that particular area. This was a semi-truck fire on Kelly Court off of Louisville Road. Again, pretty good conditions as far as time of day for our travel, and that's 10:51 a.m. on a Sunday. Travel time to that particular incident was 6 minutes and 18 seconds. A total of 8 minutes and 35 seconds had elapsed from the time the call was received. Typically, pretty significant damage. There were three tractor trailers, or semi-trucks destroyed with one receiving significant damage. Just shows you how fast the fire can get moving. And we talked about development in Lover's Lane area. We know too that north side area is continuing to develop, you know, Transpark expansion, trying to bring in more industry, more jobs. We know that there are currently about 1,750 people that call the Transpark home as far as work is concerned, with payroll exceeding $115 million. With the new exit 30, we anticipate more development along, in that area, and additionally, Kelly Road area. Likewise, Mormon Lane and Bristol Road, there's area for development that could affect future needs of service in that particular area, and, you know, that particular area continues to be somewhat of a moving target for us. Future considerations, things that we've, that we're trying to evaluate and would like to share with you, and what we expect. We expect the run volume in the Lover's Lane area to be about 400 calls per year in that particular district, with them making up to 700 calls supporting adjoining stations and on fire alarms, structure fires. The north side, the Greenwood and the airport districts, they'll provide key support to those jurisdictions. We anticipate development in that area to be typical, such as your single-family homes, to moderate-risk occupancies, which would include your multifamily apartment buildings, those things. And we anticipate some high-risk occupancies. We've talked about the hotels, daycare in that particular jurisdiction as well, and some of the medical facilities. North side area, as we demonstrated earlier, there's a relatively, excuse me, low run volume with only around 100 responses per year in that geographical area. But we do know that there are high to maximum risk occupancies with the facilities, the square footage, the number of individuals on site, the chemicals, those types of things. So those, several facilities in that jurisdiction pose what we consider a maximum risk based off our risk assessments. And we know that significant financial and economic impact can occur from a, from a fire in those types of facilities. I'd like to share with you just some recommendations. The Lover's Lane area, we are proposing or recommending to design and build a new fire station in that particular area. Additionally, we will need to hire additional personnel to staff that particular station, or we are recommending that. In the north side area, again, we are recommending designing and building the new station in that particular area. And our recommendation is that we relocate personnel currently at our Porter Pike station to a new station more centrally located to that particular jurisdiction. We estimate construction costs to follow traditional cost patterns that are similar to those of the Greenwood station back in 2007, 2008. We estimate those construction costs, including ancillary equipment and furnishings, to range, and land as well, to range in the $3 to $4 million per location. Most notably, the Fire Improvement Fund will support all capital costs of these particular Transitioning into personnel costs, again, with recommending that we relocate existing personnel for the north side station, no personnel would be needed. Transitioning into the Lover's Lane, a station, traditionally opening a new station would result in 15 positions. We have four assigned to the apparatus. Of course, those individuals, you know, receive vacation, holidays, and personal time off. So therefore, based off our studies and leave factor and understanding what that is, we would need to hire 15 to operate that station with the four-person crew. However, we can do, we can open a new station with no additional personnel. Staffing would require, or it would require that we reduce staffing on existing apparatus down to three-person crews on nearly all the apparatus that we have in the city. There are certainly negative impacts to this. It will negatively impact our ISO rating, as we talked about before. Additionally, we do have to follow OSHA standard, which requires that when we are operating in a hazardous environment, we have to have at least two people. If we have two people in, we have to have two- If we have two people in, we have to have two people outside to perform rescue or other necessary tasks. In other words, we can't arrive with a three-person crew and two people go in to start fighting a fire and leave one person outside. According to OSHA, we are not allowed to do that unless there is a rescue or the fire is small enough that it doesn't require a hose line to extinguish. So based off understanding our leave factor, our current staffing and what that looks like, I'm recommending a nine-personnel for the station on Lover's Lane. Working with Katie and Jeff, we've determined, and Mike, Mike's gone, we've determined that the total first-year cost for this is eight hundred and two thousand dollars. Sixty-one thousand of that includes one-time costs, such as turnout gear and personal protective equipment and a few other things. We would recommend that the nine personnel, similar to traditionally, we phase those in over the course of two to three years. We know that, you know, this provides tremendous impact. It will allow our crews to operate more safely with four personnel. When we're operating with three, the officer in charge who's making decisions and observing the scene, he becomes directly involved in performing tasks essential to what's going on. So this allows us to operate according to the OSHA two-in, two-out, effective in that regards, and allows the officer to oversee operations. Additionally, we know that this will improve our ISO rating or our grade. So that's part of the reason that nine personnel are recommended. In summary, again, we've talked about the things, hopefully, that we've evaluated, taken into consideration. We've hopefully described to you the methodology that exists in helping us to make the recommendations before you, which, again, are purchasing land, constructing two fire stations, and reallocating existing resources from the Porter Pike Station to one of those. With that, you know, essentially, I'm here this evening asking for permission to begin identifying and analyzing ideal locations that will help us address the challenges that we've presented to you this evening. With that, I'll be glad to answer, try and answer any questions you might have.
I got one, Chief.
Yes.
What about the equipment to go inside of these new stations? How many new fire trucks and?
Like the answer, zero. We essentially have additional apparatus that we can place in the Lover's Lane station. And again, we are, as far as the reason we're using nine personnel is because we're going to shift some personnel to staff that. So we tried to find the balance in all of this. So with the North Side station, again, we would be relocating the apparatus and the equipment that's currently at Porter Pike to that station as well. So no, no equipment needs.
Do you plan to continue any operation at the Porter Pike location?
It currently serves as a wonderful training center. We have a burn building, a four-story drill tower, and lots of props and facilities there. Our training offices are located in that facility. We obviously need a training facility, so we would continue to use that in that regards until we evaluate other options or what, you know, what, obviously, we wouldn't want to take on additional expenses of, you know, moving our training center. So we would continue to operate it as such and.
I would, I would think that if you were to do that, you would take a look at where your runs are taking place in that district, and if they're going more back toward town or in that general vicinity of the Porter Pike location, that we may want to think about restocking that facility.
Yeah, I understand that. And we know there, I think there, well, as a matter of fact, one was on the agenda tonight for additional developments in that area, you know, off the McFadden area. So, you know, those are all things that we're trying to evaluate and take into consideration and do our best to protect all areas, so.
I don't want to weaken an area by strengthening another.
Absolutely, absolutely. And again, we would, you know, we would not want to move that station, you know, too far north, but at the same time, we do need to be able to provide adequate protection in a timely manner to, you know, areas that have moved north of the city, the previous city limits.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. On, on your graphs where you talk about emergency responses on the North Side area, in 2015, you had fifty-four, and in 2016, you had ninety-five, are all of those fires?
No, those are, those are not fires. I've got, I've got the data. Those are total.
So every run?
Those are total emergency responses. We pulled out the non-emergencies because you can't get accurate times because you're going flow of traffic. So we, all those are based off emergency responses.
Okay. And then when you have additional units that are dispatched, if we go back to one of your graphs again, like the structure fire at the Trans Park, three, first units arrived with travel time of seven oh two, three headquarter units arrived at twelve fifty-two, can we assume that all those units dispatched at the same time?
That's correct. On a, on a structure fire, we send at least five companies, five trucks, in order to ensure that we're getting at least fourteen personnel on scene. So all those units, provided the call comes in as a structure fire, all those units are dispatched simultaneously. That's correct.
And then my last was more of a comment, and that is the, to get towards the end and when we start talking about the buildings and we talk about the Fire Improvement Fund will support all capital costs. I think we'd be remiss if we didn't mention Commissioner Charlie Wilson and his being instrumental in establishing the Fire Improvement Fund all those years ago, so that, you know, I don't know that Commissioner Wilson envisioned Bowling Green as it is today, but what he did back then is helping us, you know, serve the citizens from an infrastructure standpoint in the big growth that we're having today.
Absolutely. That, that particular fund is, you know, it's provided all the stations, all the equipment, you know, that we've purchased for many, many, for many years that I, you know, since, since I've been there, all, you know, all that is a result of that endeavor.
Other question to follow up on what Commissioner Nance said on the, on total run volume. I'm just picking one of the future considerations. You had run volume estimated at four hundred in the district, seven hundred total. Again, those are not all structure fires. We don't want people to think Bowling Green's burning down.
Right.
Fortunately, yeah, fortunately, structure fires are, you know, are.
Less than fifty.
Less than fifty per year in the entire city, generally around the forty range. But we make numerous other responses in addition to that, yeah.
So only count fire?
That's correct. They only evaluate fire. In other words, they, they're, you're, they're rating your fire protection.
Right. That's what my question was. So the figures that you've provided with us are total emergency responses or only fire emergency responses?
Total emergencies. That way, we have a large dataset to really determine true time. You take a small dataset, it could really be skewed in, in, you know, trying to evaluate those times, so.
So if we're, I'm sorry. Go ahead. So if we're looking at that, what we're doing is we're making an assumption that every time we make a run, it's for the, for the sake of this dataset, that every time we, that the fire department makes a run, it could potentially be a fire as a way to evaluate how long it's taking us to get from point A to point B in any district, no matter what that's.
That's correct. And we're analyzing all our districts now, and we're even breaking them down into smaller portions. So we know that, you know, for instance, Headquarters, that particular district, you know, which I don't have the particular map, but we know that for the last three years, our ninetieth percentile for that particular district is four minutes and five seconds. So those, you know, and that shows you the difference between distance and, you know, travel times, you know, when you have a station, you know, within that mile and a half, two-mile type radius, you can, you can, you know, I mean, you can get there in a timely fashion, so.
On your, speaking of that, that's what I was wanting to ask you about. You have a map here that is broken down into, I think it's the airport station is Station Two, and you have it two-dash-two and a two-dash-one. I'm just trying to follow up what that, what those breakdowns mean.
Who's your first map?
Okay, I changed maps on you. Sorry. Because this one had a better picture. Let me get to, let me get to where you're at, if you give me one.
I've got it here if it, if you don't.
I guess my question is, are those sub-districts?
Those are sub-districts. What we're doing is analyzing response times to each of those sub-districts. So for instance, if you're looking at that particular map, I believe you'll see like one-dash-one. The ninetieth percentile time for that area is, over the last three years, is four minutes and five seconds. So again, we're hitting our benchmark in that particular area. When you get into the one-dash-two, which I believe is the Lover's Lane area, is that over the last three years is six minutes and thirty seconds. So you can see the difference there.
How does that play into the ISO rating if you divide them out into subcategories? Does it give you a greater percentage for the one point?
Reason we do this is for accreditation purposes, so that we're continuously trying to improve those. How does this affect ISO? ISO will look at one of two variables. They'll either look at developed areas inside of that one and a half or outside of that one and a half miles. In other words, if there is a developed area outside of a mile and a half of one of our engine companies or one of our stations, it basically lower, it counts against us. I don't know how else to put that. Or ISO will also allow us to submit our response times in lieu of looking at our actual map with, you know, travel, travel distances and all that. They, and they will let, let us take the better of the two scores. I believe in 2015, and Dustin can correct me if I'm wrong, they used the, the road miles was better than our actual response times. So we can use either one, but for the, like I said, the purposes of this conversation, we kind of stuck with road miles.
I support the fire department and the goals that we have for the city of Bowling Have you, I don't know how to ask this without it coming out wrong, and I don't mean for it to come, is there a creative way to look at a different access? For example, the airport station, would it be better if it were on the Public Works property at that end where it had a little quicker access going either direction? Or could we talk the airport into bill, letting us build a fire lane around their department to reduce that time as opposed to creating an entire new company? Because I see that company is, it says eight hundred thousand a year, but that's not what you want. You want fifteen people out there, so we're talking, you know.
We, we will be certainly fine with, with the nine people. I don't need fifteen. We have, we have determined that nine will meet our needs, so.
Today.
Huh?
Today.
Today. No, nine will meet our needs for the future as well.
But, you know, are there, did, were there any options looked at as far as a different access? Because I can, I can build a road, and it's easier to maintain than putting out eight hundred thousand dollars a year from now on for another, another station, I guess.
We will certainly be glad to, to look at that and entertain that. We looked more at the Trans Park. We pulled time of day and to determine if there was a pattern. In other words, are there more responses from, you know, seven a.m. to seven p.m.? And perhaps we work with, you know, a business in that area to locate apparatus and equipment, but there was no rhyme or reason to the time of day. Back to your original question of the airport, no, we didn't consider moving that existing station, but that's certainly something that we could entertain and report back and try and, you know.
I don't pretend to be the most creative person in the world.
No, that's, sure.
I'm just, I'm thinking, there's got to be a way, going all the way around to get to.
We have to stay, we've got to be able to reach the center point of the runway within a certain timeframe, so those will obviously limit where we put that. And it really, it becomes, you know, we really don't want to be crossing runways and doing all that to try and navigate a response. So I'd be glad, you know, to say that I looked at that, I did not, but I'd be glad to look and see if there's something suitable that would still allow us to, to meet those needs. I know the airport to Circe Way is about a mile and a half. The entrance to Traditions is about two miles. So we still got to, yeah, we'd have to look at it and see if that would make sense. And that would be part of the, you know, that would be part of the, you know, the analysis that I'm, that I'm asking to kind of move forward with is determine the ideal location. So we would certainly take that into consideration.
I feel like the North Side, we knew that was coming at some point.
Sure.
I know that was kind of a given. Now, the other side of the airport, how we best supply that, I don't know, but I like the information. I appreciate that. But I think you had something, Mr. Phil.
You mentioned runtimes. Does that include prep before you leave the firehouse? For example, there's timing, the vehicle travels on the road until the travel distance and traffic, correct? But there's also time to get in the truck.
Correct. The standard is, once the call is received, dispatch has about, I believe, fifteen seconds to answer the call. After that, they have about a minute. The benchmark is one minute for them to dispatch us. Then we get the call. We have a minute or a minute and twenty seconds, depending on the nature of the call. And we have timers in the station. Chief Rockore sends out a reminder, because we're evaluating those. We want to make sure that our crews are getting on the trucks within a minute or a minute and twenty seconds if they have to don their full protective equipment. You know, those are all, you know, add up to that additional two minutes or two minutes and thirty seconds from the time the call was received.
How do we do on that?
We do well, Chief Rockore.
We meet the benchmark.
We meet, we meet the benchmark on those particular, you know, on that type of.
One more question. We fight fires, right? And then we do emergency response for wrecks and things of that nature, people who have medical distress. Does the prep time for a person for a EMS call, less time than a fire run? Do you have to wear bunker gear, for example, for an EMS call? Is the same amount of time needed to prepare to leave the fire station for a EMS call as for a fire call?
Twenty seconds difference.
Twenty seconds.
For a, for a medical call, it's one minute. For a, an incident that would require us to don the protective equipment, it's one minute and twenty seconds. And we, our guys, they train on, as monotonous as it sounds, they train on that, putting on their turnout gear. They complete performance drills to ensure that everybody's achieving that benchmark.
Bruce's questioning, I think. So a fire run by its very nature might take one more minute because you have to.
About twenty seconds.
Twenty seconds.
That's correct. Yeah. And the total response time.
Got it.
Not the travel time, so.
We're, if I could speak, what we're, what we, the purpose tonight was to inform the public of this challenge that we have in our community, which is a good challenge, was also to get the commission, we talked about this at retreat, but to get your approval for us to start the analysis of where possible fire stations should be located. Because it is an analysis. And you mentioned the creative response that could be needed to look at different alternatives. We would like permission to start looking at idealized locations and bring some of those back to you in near future. That's what we, our goal was tonight. Not to build a fire station tomorrow, not to hire people, but just to start that vetting process. Because every fire station that was built, there was an analysis why it was built there. And we need to microanalyze that and look at various properties that may fit that need, including one maybe tangential to these maps. You mentioned the airport and other ones that may meet that need. So we'd like your permission to move forward on looking at individualized parcels that may fit our need.
Along those same lines, too, Kevin. I think that just entering into these studies, the citizens of our community may have questions about other areas of the city. We start mentioning these, you know, these response times and these travel times, and people are going to be interested as to what, you know, what the travel time is in their area. So we need to make, I think, those numbers available. I'm sure you look at them. I'm sure you look at them.
Sure, we have those.
So, these are, these are what you have determined as being the most critical areas.
Yes, sir.
And those obviously need to be addressed first.
You do a good job overall. Our ISO is fairly low, correct?
Yes, it's...
Can you tell that?
One being the best word, a two. I want to maintain a two. It's, you know, it's a close two.
Right.
It's a close two. Won't take much to, you know...
It's about polishing the needlepoint to get better. Take what we're doing well and make it superb.
How many, how many fire departments in Kentucky are a two or better?
There are eight Class Ones, and I believe there are 33 twos. In Kentucky, yeah.
What's money is in the fire improvement fund as of today?
My colleague to the right.
There's just north of $2 million in fund balance, if I remember correctly. That fund brings in about 2.1, 2.2 million a year now in insurance premium taxes. I looked into the discussion we had at the retreat about possibly putting some personnel in that fund, and I don't think that's feasible. I don't recommend that because this fund is mainly, it's going to be responsible for servicing the debt on these stations. We've got several trucks coming up that we're going to have to purchase and finance, cover that debt service. So, we do the best we can, and we'll make it work. But 75% of that 2.2 million dollars is debt service that we have to cover in that fund. And the rest of it goes towards equipment and things like that. So, it kind of gives, hopefully that gives you an idea. It's about, it's about a $2.2 million annual revenue. And we've got the fund balance up above 2 million, I think, right now.
And we do know that in 2021, several of the fire stations fall off. Those payments are paid in full, so...
By the time our debt service is, stuff falls off, when we, that's the point we look at adding, like some of the trucks or whatever, if we need to, with new debt service to keep it nice and level.
I'll answer your questions. Thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Abbo, did you have anything else?
I'm mayor.
All right. This time, we have public comments. Public comments available. If someone would like to step forward and make a comment for the city commission on an item that they'd like to bring to our attention, this would be that time. Please give us your name and address, please, sir.
So, what was that last one?
Name and address.
Seth Peckham, 657 East 14th Avenue. Commissioners, Mayor Wilkerson, I would like to talk to you about why I think Bowling Green should pass the fairness ordinance. I want to thank you for your time and attention. I know I am not the first person to stand up here and speak on this, so I appreciate your willingness to listen to another citizen, express his views. I am not a Bowling Green native. I grew up in rural Kansas, and it was the opportunity to attend Western Kentucky University that brought me here. Today, as an employee of WKU, I can say pretty safely that the reason I am a permanent resident in Bowling Green is WKU. In my job, I work with students from across Kentucky and the US who are here for the same reason. These students are brilliant. They are compassionate. They are motivated, and many of them are members of the LGBTQ+ community. Over the years, I've talked with them about their experience living in Bowling Green, and every one of them has a story of discrimination, whether it's a slur hurled at them by a coworker or a manager in the workplace, or the homophobia of a landlord showing them an apartment. But it's not always blatant. Not every apartment they didn't get, or workplace that didn't hire them. Not every experience of discrimination is written in clear, bold font. Not every moment of alienation is accompanied by an unambiguous declaration that LGBTQ+ individuals need not apply. But cumulatively, it sends a clear message. And so does the commission's refusal to pass a fairness ordinance. It tells young people that Bowling Green is not willing to make an effort to protect people of different sexual orientations and gender identities. That message has a tangible effect year after year. These students leave after graduation. They seek a place that makes them feel welcome. And they're not necessarily going to New York or San Francisco or Miami. They're going to Nashville, Louisville, Lexington. They're taking their talents. They're becoming teachers, doctors, lawyers, architects, and small business owners, and they are going somewhere else. It breaks my heart that I have chosen this place to build my life, and yet it is so comfortable making others feel unwelcome. There are only so many ways to say it. We have a moral imperative to fight discrimination, and we have an economic incentive to ensure that we attract the best and the brightest regardless of who they love or how they identify. It is not too late to do better. And in this case, it's not very hard either. Pass the ordinance. Make the statement that Bowling Green wants to be a place that anyone would want to call home. Thank you.
Anybody else this evening?
All right, their next meeting is scheduled.
I have one more, mayor.
Yes, sir?
Sorry. My name is Mike Ayers. I live in Louisville, 713 Cherokee Woods Road. I'm here representing my mom. She also lives in Louisville now. She owns a piece of property on Pearl Street that we would love for you to buy. So, I'm here to try to sell you a piece of real estate, and I'm here to tell you about it more than you ever wanted to know about 750 Pearl Street. I've got some handouts here if you want to try to follow along. I have to time this, so if I'm running out of time, please let me know 30 seconds ahead of time at least. This property was purchased by my dad in January 1962. A lot in store altogether for $5,050, about four tenths of an acre. I was born and raised in Bowling Green. We lived at 821 Church Street, about two blocks away from this property, so we knew it well. We knew all about Whiskey Run Creek Sewage System, whichever one you want to call it. We saw it as a ditch about four feet deep and about six feet wide. And Whiskey Run went on to bigger and better things, as I'll talk about here. My dad had a store on it. He didn't want to run the store. He converted it into a rental unit, and that was his investment going forward, and he saw some value in that opportunity. The structure that was on it was destroyed in a fire. There wasn't as good fire service back in those days as there is now. Unfortunately, it was destroyed in around 1968, we believe. In the mid-'70s, the city decided they needed to do something about the drainage problems downtown. I'm very familiar with what the square looked like after a heavy rain. The post office area, Main Street, had a lot of water on it. So, how did you decide to get rid of that water? You built an elaborate drainage system and pipes flowing everywhere and converting, converging down to Seventh and Center. And at Seventh and Center, you decided to run the water down Whiskey Run. And you didn't want to do it above ground, so you built this big pipe system underground. It went all the way to Pearl Street, right through our property. It opens up about 150 feet past our property. Consequently, there's a big flood zone area there, and our property is in a flood zone, basically worthless today. There was no easement recorded against the deed. We can validate that. We don't know if there truly, if there was any compensation paid at that point in time, but we don't think so.
Before you go any further, right here, where is it?
Where is that at?
That's the first one in your packet.
Yeah.
Which is the property?
You see the boxes?
See the what?
The boxed areas.
Yeah, there's several of them.
There's two of them that are boxed. Dotted lines?
One that says 200...
One right on the corner.
The one that says 277.32 square feet?
Yes.
And the other one is 1,611 square feet.
Yes, those two are our property.
Okay.
Okay. The city decided to relocate the property owners in that area to the side of us, behind us, up to where the Houchnes facility is. And when they bought that property, they immediately turned around and sold it to Houchnes. Houchnes owns all that land around our area. In 1980, FEMA issued their first flood map, validating that that was a flood zone area. They have done two maps since then. They look exactly the same, so nothing has been done. FEMA encouraged me or made me aware that they don't do anything without the city's agreement, counsel in that effort. And I should have had another date here, 1994, my dad died. This was his investment. He didn't talk to kids. He didn't talk to my mom about it. So, we lost our institutional history about what happened back in the '70s when this property was being taken over by the city for a lot of the people. In April of 2016, we got a code zone violation. The weeds need to be cut. They haven't been cut since probably 1968. So, we've got basically a forest down there. That encouraged us to hire a realtor. As you can imagine, in a flood zone, he hasn't had any luck. He had one possible sale in February 2017. That's when I became very good friends with Ben Peterson, the Planning and Zoning Commissioner. We talked and talked, and we put before him this possible sale, and he denied it. He said we could appeal, but we had to get an engineering study. That would cost us $4,000. I probably needed to hire an attorney at that point. So, why spend $8,000 on a deal that was going to benefit us to $10,000? The next page, as you've already seen, page two of the graph, the property. You can see the lines there represent Whiskey Run, the big pipes. They go all the way to Church Street and then down Church Street. I just want to let you all know Greg Meredith has been a significant value to me in this process. We actually met at the property today. He provided an updated map. He thinks it's a more accurate drawing of where the pipes are on the property. He now thinks the pipes represent a larger portion of the property than he did before. Instead of 1,900 feet, he now thinks it's about 2,700 feet. The next page, page three. You can see, you can see Pearl Street. You can see Jackson Street. The little box that's drawn in there, that's our lot. You can see, if you go straight across Church Street to a little area that's got a circle around it, that's where the pipes come out. In Area A, that represents four parcels that the city bought and turned around and sold it to Houchnes in April of '79 for $10,000. Area B, six parcels that were bought between '76 and '82, 1.6 acres, sold to Houchnes in '82 for $1,000. The next slide, you see where the pipes come out. Big pipes, four feet by nine feet, bringing through a lot of water. You also see over to the right, a drainage ditch or drainage structure, if you will, that runs along the middle of Church Street. That's capturing most of the runoff water from the Houchnes property, I would say. The next pages are two pages of the letter that I wrote to Ben Peterson, trying to convince him as to why this potential sale we had made sense. It also provides some background history. It raises some questions at the bottom of page five. I don't think I got answers to all those questions, and I don't think I will get answers to all those questions. So, just if you can find the time to read that. In conclusion, and I would just want to say, I appreciate you all letting me present this. Neither party, us or the city, has any correspondence dating back to the '70s. I thought the city might have something in their archives that would help us understand why didn't we get our property bought? What made us not sell our property? Were we offered anything back in those days? You know, why did we end up here? It doesn't make any sense for us to own a lot in a flood zone when everybody else around us got bought out by the city. The city has offered us $2,500 for easement rights. I appreciate that offer, but that's not what we want. We want to get out of the deed. We want the city to take over the property. It's in a flood zone. It's not going to get out of the flood zone. Nothing's being done down there to remedy the flood zone. I don't expect that to happen in going forward. We think $6,100 would be reasonable compensation. How did I get there? The land that we bought in 1962, if you assumed a 4% compounded rate, if you add the taxes that we paid from 1977 to forward, forward to this date, I think that represents something that most people could relate to as reasonable compensation. So, instead of 2,500, we're not getting anything for it, why not spend $6,100 for a nice piece of property that I think the city has every opportunity to leverage its relationship with Houchnes and get them to buy that from you? We have talked to Houchnes, haven't gotten their attention. We're not big enough to get their attention, but I think the city could get their attention. If that isn't acceptable, and I'm not expecting any answer tonight, obviously, we hope, I hope, that the city would agree to go to an arbitration on this issue. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ayers, there's no correspondence between you, your family, and the city from the '60s or '70s or whenever this occurred? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Files are non-existent as well. We don't have any files.
Been in contact with the city's attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
And also through Ashley doing open markets requests, we've done quite an extensive search to try and find any communication, and we were unable to find anything.
Who would have?
I don't know for sure. I mean, there, obviously, we have some records that relate to other property acquisitions, but who did the work? I'm not sure that we specifically looked at information like that. But I can tell you what Mr. Ayers did request is terms of information. We searched and was unable to find a great deal of information to provide to him on that.
And we have searched for any recordable or recorded easements or deeds, and were unable to find any recorded deeds or easements to this property at all. I mean, I thought, you know, at one time, it's a possibility we actually purchased the property back in the '70s like the others, but if so, there's no deed that was ever recorded to show that.
Look on the urban renewal. It's been there. If it was urban renewal, they bought it, I guess, wouldn't it?
I'll let Katie address that. I'm not sure how far back our records go on some of those.
We searched through every records we have access to, and they don't exist any longer. So, I can't tell you what could have happened to them.
They don't exist, and I...
We don't, since we don't know, since they don't exist, we don't honestly know what could have existed, if that makes sense.
That's what my question is, if we don't have a record of a deed or an easement, where there been a record of a construction project through Public Works or anything like that? There's nothing?
Unable to find anything on that.
Well, we're faced with two things. Mr. Ayers apparently owns it now. As far as the city of Bowling Green is concerned, who takes care of it? Who takes care of water problems or whatever? Is it the city of Bowling Green own said property?
We did actually find a construction plan sheet from the 1970s. The project was 70-70. That doesn't mean it was built in 1970, it was designed then. That's all we found. We didn't find, again, any determination of easement. As far as I know, and I've only been around a while, there's never been any maintenance that's been required for that. It's a concrete box culvert. Since the time it was built, it's probably been maintenance-free, quite honestly. So, in answer to your question, Commissioner Denny.
You need the property for continuation of the water yet?
Well, again, that was why, because we couldn't find an easement that was dedicated for this drainage structure. We offered to work with Mr. Ayers to put together what would be a necessary drainage easement and compensate him for that now, because at some point, there may be a need to go in and do some maintenance. It's not happened yet, but if it were to come up and we need to replace a section of it, you know, we had a sinkhole, this is a drainage...
of it, you know, we had a sinkhole, this is a drainage facility. It was a drainage facility before the culvert was built. Don't get me wrong, it's, it's always been a ditch. It's always been a drainage ditch. In the 1970s, it was encapsulated and enclosed to make it a concrete culvert.
So, our watershed, our portion of the city's watershed is going through those pipes?
Yes.
Own to Mr. Ayers property or through?
Through his property. Yes, sir.
What would happen? Is there anything that would prevent Mr. Ayers, and I'm not suggesting that he would or anybody, if there is no legal easement that exists now, from blocking the water that would go through there?
No.
And what would that do to the city if somebody demoed what is there or blocked it in some way?
Water would find its own way down to the river, I guarantee you. So, whether that means it would, if you blocked it in a place, it might wash out some of, some of his adjoining property. So, that's what would happen now.
Go through one of the doors at Houchnes?
That'd get their attention.
I, I made mention, and I am serious. Hey, we spent $6,000 on whatever. This gentleman lives in Lowell, it's a family property. We're using his property, whether we want to say it or not, buy the man's property for the amount he's asking.
Are you buying or buying an easement?
The offer was to, the offer was to purchase easement because we couldn't find an easement. That's what we've been talking about the whole time. Because of that, in order to make sure that we had the ability to maintain it long-term, that we would purchase that easement and to be able to maintain that particular portion of the land.
So, all we're talking about is the value of the easement of 2,500 versus V6,000?
Yes.
Okay.
But he, but I don't believe the owner, I don't believe Mr. Ayers wants the easement. He wants us to purchase the property.
Right.
For 6,000.
Yeah.
For 6,000. Well, really, for a difference of 3,600.
Right.
I mean, if, if we're really talking about real dollars...
$6,100, right.
It's $6,100, but...
But when you take out the 2,500 that we would already pay, there's a diff, we're talking about a difference of $3,600.
And I truly believe Houchnes would step up and do something.
Why do you want us to buy rather than buy an easement? What's, what's the difference in your mind?
Again?
What's the difference between a purchase easement and purchase of the property, in your mind?
It's a liability. We're not taking care of the property. We can't take care of the property from where we are, so we just think it's better in somebody else's hands.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate your time. I think we can take care of this if you all are in agreement?
I'm in agreement.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Moreland. I live at 1367 Clyde Street. I still believe we should have a fraud department. I still believe that we should have police officers that is, their job is to help with fraud. One police officer, even if it's just, even if it's one police officer, that's all I'm asking, is one police officer to be designed for fraud. Because what's happening, the police are so busy doing other cause, and nobody understands that fraud is important, you know? And all I'm asking is one police officer be hired for the fraud department and make a fraud department. Seriously, make, and that's all I'm asking. And this is an energy drink, just in case you're wondering. So, and, okay, and I'm, all I'm asking is for you to, because I think next year is election. I think it is. So, you know, in one year, you have no idea what's going to happen in election, and you have no idea, because people are going to get tired of this. People are going to get tired of this. You're not doing the human rights and everything like that. You're not doing anything right, and people are going to get tired of it. So, election is coming up. Remember that.
Anyone else? Yes, sir?
Howdy, look at him, we're well. 1438 Chestnuts Street, number two. I just wanted to let you guys know graduation for West Kentucky University is this Saturday, so I just wanted to openly invite everyone here to come and attend, and we would love to see you guys there. I'll be graduating at 2:00 from the Ogden College of Science and Engineering, so just wanted to let you all know.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, that's the end of the meeting. December 19th is the next one. Thank you.